I didn't know that.
At this time, I would like to call the September sixth, two thousand and sixteen meeting of the Yukon City Council to order. If you would rise for the invocation by Dave Dolphin of Trinity Baptist Church and remain standing for the flag salute, please.
Let's pray. God, we thank you for the opportunity that we live in a part of the world where we can work together and make decisions to create a community that we, that we want. And so, I pray that we would work together to, to, to make that happen. I thank you for the elected people that are here that, that lead and love this city and they give up their time to, to help, you know, create this, uh, this city. And I pray that, as your word says, that if anyone lacks wisdom, that we would, uh, we would ask for that and you give that in abundance. So, tonight, we ask for wisdom, that you would help us and lead us and guide us in the decisions that we have to make, um, and that we would ultimately look to you in all that we do. We pray this in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Here.
McCarran?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
Smysterla?
Here.
Yanda?
Here.
At this point in the meeting, we are to conduct a public hearing to receive input from the public regarding the completed two thousand and fourteen CDBG program. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to address the council, make public comments about the two thousand and fourteen CDB program, please? Seeing none, this is the presentations and proclamation part of the, the meeting. Do we have any tonight, sir?
None tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. The next part is the visitor's section of the meeting. If you are a visitor to our meeting tonight and you would like to address the council about a non-adjourned item, uh, there are forms in the back. It might be a little late for that, but if you have something that you would like to talk to the council about, you're welcome to come forward. Rick Caccini is here this evening, that, and he would like to address the council.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, Rick Caccini from eleven forty Landmark Drive, Yukon, Oklahoma, city curator of the museum. I just want to make a quick announcement that, uh, I'll be interviewed tomorrow morning on channel twenty-five between eleven-thirty and twelve, and they'll be interviewing me regarding the Yukon Museum as well as the gala. And I'm going to again, thank you all for all that you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you so much for your hard work, too. Your consistent hard work and effort. Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council about a non-adjourned item?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Your name, please, and your address.
I just want to-
Sir, before you could get your name, name and address-
Lynn Alexander, fourteen oh eight Greenway Drive.
Thank you.
And, sir, you, at this part, portion of the meeting, we have the three-minute?
Okay, this will be less than that.
Okay, just wanted to share with-
I want to thank the council for listening to us tonight. What we're asking for is ethical and humane treatment of animals in, located in a Yukon building, which is seven oh one Inla. We are a group of concerned citizens for the ethical treatment of animals. We are here today to ask the city council to vote in favor of inviting the national organization, which you guys have already heard about and we have listed in the paperwork, to come in and take care of this current situation. The yes vote would allow a national organization to step in and remove animals from the present situation at no cost to the city of Yukon. It would be a win-win for both the city of Yukon as well as the animals. This organization will evaluate and find homes for these animals. They will remove them. This will clear the shelter and allow for the current occupant to start over. We're asking that the city be involved in oversight of future contracts with this organization, as well as oversight of the number of animals that they will be allowed to, into their shelter. Thank you for your time. Please read the information that we've given you and make an informed decision on this matter. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Anyone else here this evening that would like to address the council about a non-adjourned item? Seeing none, then we will recess at this time as the Yukon City Council and reconvene as the YMA. Uh, the first item is item one A, and that's the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve, A, the minutes of the regular meeting of August the sixteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Do I have a motion, please?
Shall move.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
McCarran?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smysterla?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
The next item is item two A, and that's consider approving a budget amendment from the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen fiscal year to balance the capital improvements fund thirty-six and Stormwater Enterprise Fund seventy-three. Have a motion, please?
Shall move.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Mr. Crosby, would you mind letting it, explaining, just so the people here in the audience might understand why that amendment's necessary?
Uh, this is the budget from last year. Uh, this has been brought forward by our auditors who feel that they need to have this in order to complete the audit. It's ongoing. And, um, to get that done, and they need to have it as quick as possible so they can move forward.
Okay. Questions? Questions? Call the roll, please.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarran?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smysterla?
Yes.
At this time, we will adjourn as YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. The first item is business, is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve, A, the minutes of the regular meeting of August the sixteen, two thousand and sixteen. B, the payment of material claims in the amount of eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty-one cents. C, designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, donation, or trade. D, agreement of services between the city of Yukon and the Yukon Chamber of Commerce for the term of July one, two thousand and sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, at the cost of twenty-five hundred dollars per month. E, the renewal of the Cisco Smart Net Maintenance Contract purchase from Posado Network Studios at a cost of twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents, as recommended by the Information Technology Director. F, the appointment of David Goodwin to the Board of Spanish Cove Housing Authority for the remainder of the term of office number five, expiring May thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, as recommended by the nominating committee. G, the renewal of the existing Park and Recreation Department operation lease agreement with the Yukon Optimist Club for the use of the Community Center football field from August the seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen, through November the thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. And H, setting the date for the next regular council meeting for September the twentieth, two thousand and sixteen, seven P.M., in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, twelve South Fifth Street, Yukon, Oklahoma. Do I have a motion, please?
Shall move. Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Russell?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smysterla?
Yes.
McCarran?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes. Item two is the reports of boards, commissions, and city officials. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I would like to report to you that, uh, we had some questions regarding our forensic audit and the audit on the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen business. Mr. Lonny Heim has reported today that, uh, they're very close to finishing that. There's, uh, four items he needs. Two of them are very simple. The other two are a couple of meetings, which we will hold this week, and he should have that, uh, his portion of the, that audit to be finished at the end of the week. They will then move forward, uh, with our other forensic auditor, and he has stated that it should be done within two weeks. And we should have a meeting towards the end of the month or something, just by itself, with the council, to go over those items. Either at the end of the month or the first of next month, whatever date we can get everyone together. So, that'll put an end to that, uh, portion that everybody has been waiting on.
Questions for the manager? Questions? Mr. Manager, so that, that's a public meeting? Where we'll talk-
We will probably have an executive session and a public meeting to discuss it, but it'll be the only items on that agenda.
Okay, so it'll be a public meeting where we, we would adjourn it, adjourn into executive session, discuss the audit, and then come out and report, have the audit and report for the citizens?
That's correct.
Okay. And that, they'll be able to, citizens will be able to determine that meeting is, how will they be able to determine when the meeting is? Sorry.
Well, yes, if there's discussion, if people want to talk about it, but then, uh, I'll make sure the press and everybody has plenty of notice on that item so they can get it and, uh, try to have any pertinent information that, uh, are findings. So, uh, it'll be public prior to the meeting or some of it, so that we can at least, uh, uh, get into a very deep discussion of anything that people may have a question on, sir.
Okay, so it'll be newspaper, it'll be on our website?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then be posted out front?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and anticipated the last week of this month or first week?
First week of next month, yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions?
And then that report will be available for anyone to have access to it? The complete report?
Yes, it's a, it's public information. So, anyone that wants to read the whole thing or look at it is more than welcome to.
All right. Anything else?
That's all, sir.
Item three, consider approving a budget amendment for the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen fiscal year to balance the capital improvement funds thirty-six and Stormwater Enterprise Fund seventy-three. Motion, please.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Yanda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Smysterla?
Yes.
McCarran?
Yes.
The next item is four, and that's consider approving the preliminary plat for Salazar, Salazar Residential, a part of the southwest quarter of Section sixteen Township twelve North Range five West of the Indian Meridian, Canadian County, Oklahoma, with the conditions as recommended by the Planning Commission. Do I have a motion, please? Motion?
Shall move.
Have a second? I'll second it. Okay, discussion? Mr. Crosby, the gentlemen are here this evening to, so do I, Mike, do I allow them to-
It's up to you, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, my name's David Box, five-two-two Call Court Drive, and I'm here today on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Mr. Mark Grubbs, who's the civil engineer for this project. What we have before the council today is a plat. It's a preliminary plat. It is one that went through the Planning Commission process and received a four to nothing unanimous recommendation for approval to, to this city council. Uh, what is before you is very different than a zoning discussion. Uh, what's relevant in a zoning discussion oftentimes is not relevant to a plating discussion. And the reason is, if you look at the case law and other laws surrounding plating, it's not a decision like zoning. You're not deciding whether or not a use is appropriate. The discussion, rather, is about, does the plat meet the standards set out by a city's ordinances? And in this case, the answer is yes. Uh, there is, there is no lacking in this plat of any of the ordinances, uh, both in use, engineering requirements. This plat meets and exceeds all legal requirements that plats must conform to within the city of Yukon. One of the things I think is important to focus on is what this plat will allow. Um, this site is zoned for multifamily, and it's been that way, my understanding, uh, since sometime in the seventies, a long time. Uh, what this plat will allow is the development of three buildings, um, all single-story, a total of twenty-four units. Staff did have some requests of us that they put in the form of conditions to the Planning Commission staff report. My client agreed to all of them. In addition, there was a question raised at the Planning Commission about screening on the east side. Uh, my client, again, agreed to plant trees every forty feet on the eastern side of the property, uh, despite the fact that that was not required. We have tried at every turn to exceed, meet and exceed all requirements for the city of Yukon. There's a similar case in the state of Oklahoma that dealt with plating, and it's a case called Kelly versus City of Bethany. And I think some of the comments made by the appellate court in that are very instructive. One of the things it says is, when we're dealing with plating, that plating imposes a duty on the commissioner here at the council to determine whether or not a, submit a plat meets zoning and plating requirements. If the commission finds compliance, purpose of requiring approval by council for recordation is ministerial. So, what that tells us is, it's not a discretionary decision like you might have in a zoning case. In a zoning case, there's much different factors that are weighed. In a plating case, it's, you are permitted a certain use. Here, it's multifamily. So, the question is, does the plat that you've put forward comply with all of the, the legal requirements or the ordinances that we, as a city, have laid out for this particular zoning category or building? And the answer to the question, this, is, is affirmatively yes. Uh, there is not a single element that this plat lacks, and for that, we believe, uh, that we should be approved, and we'd certainly ask for your approval. Um, just two more things in, from that case, specifically when it talks about the decision before, here is Bethany, here's the city of Yukon. There is no discretionary act contemplated by statutes requiring approval of a plat as a condition to its recordation when such plat meets all rules and standards and thus conforms to a city ordinance. The court goes on to further state, because in this case, you had protest, uh, there is some element of protest here that, that perhaps deals with drainage. Uh, we do meet and exceed all the drainage requirements. The court was very quick to point out that protest of neighbors is not grounds or justification for a council, for the council of the city of Bethany to deny the right of a person to plat his property if he otherwise meets the law. That's on all fours with what we have here today. So, with the recommendation of the Planning Commission, my client agreeing to all conditions outlined by the staff, as well as the conditions asked of, the plan, asked of my client by the Planning Commission, we would ask for your approval. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? No questions?
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would like to address the council about the matter? If you come forward, state your name and your address, please, sir.
Jimmy Perry, four oh four Oak Creek Drive. Lived there for about twenty-eight years now. Since they, Salazar started mowing the lots that's in question, we've been invaded by rats. We got some, I've caught probably ten in live traps that are over a foot long, and I've used probably sixty sticky traps and caught little ones that's coming up out of the field. Are they going to do anything about the rat infestment? That's all I got to say. I've spent probably two hundred bucks, three hundred bucks now on rat removal, and they're still running wild. I can't even put my dogs outside. That's sad. Twenty-eight years I've been paying taxes in this city, and they want to do something that's going to, never mind, I got to quit.
Anyone else would like to address the council, please? Name and address.
My name is James Chode. I live at four oh three Oak Creek Drive. Um, the only question I have is, um, at one time, there was a discussion of a no-rise permit in the Corps of Engineers, and the only question I have, has that document been produced?
No-rise permit?
As, as, my understanding, as far as, um, when they build on this, um, that it's not going to raise the water level that's already running through that field.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else here that would like to address the council tonight? Questions? Comments?
No, we had, you know, part of the, I guess, the preliminary is, is actually looking at all of the permits and everything that's required. Is that true or, or not? I think they need to respond to that.
Good evening, Mark Grubbs. Grubbs Consulting, eighteen nineteen, South Morgan Road. On behalf of the applicant, um, we have submitted, um, during the preliminary plat, a preliminary, uh, no-rise certificate. We will, um, as we produce, go into the final plat, we massage the plans and we, uh, and we finalize any drainage analysis, things of that nature, which will be submitted to your city engineer for approval. So, there's another stage beyond that. That's the final plat stage where we tweak any preliminary calculations. But, yes, we have satisfied all the requirements of the city engineer, um, at this time at the preliminary plat phase.
Well, I think the question, though, is, is, are you going to receive a certificate? Or is there one coming? Robbie, I guess I'd ask both of you that.
He said no-rise permit was the word. Is there a note?
It's a no-rise study. Half of the property is in the floodplain, so they will be filling just a little bit. So, they will, uh, they will perform a hydraulic study on existing and propose, proposed conditions, uh, to prove that there is no rise in the, for the creek.
Well, it didn't, you know, is there a no-rise this gentleman asked for?
There's not, there's not a permit. There's a, there's a study that has to be approved by the city engineer in that situation.
And I assume at that point, that's not been done, right?
There's been a preliminary no-rise study done. It has to be massaged when we do the final grading plan and everything for the buildings and-
Has the city approved that?
You have approved the preliminary, correct, Robbie?
Not, no, I, I've not approved a no-rise study at this time.
We have, we have submitted to you a no-rise study, and you had docketed this item based on that our preliminary showed that we, we could make this work, and then we agreed that we would submit the final no-rise certificate at the final plat stage.
The first no-rise study we received was when they were going to develop more of the property. So, yes, I, I did receive that, and I reviewed it, and I provided comments. Since they've changed it, not developing as much into the floodplain, like he said, at the preliminary plat, they're just trying to get that approval, but for the final plat, he will finalize the no-rise study for our review, our final review.
We have to, at the final plat stage, we would not be approved to proceed forward with the final plat unless that no-rise study was reviewed and approved by your city engineer, which means it would show no-rise.
Right. But in answer to the question, I believe you approved or looked at the no-rise preliminary on the total development that was originally plotted for the apartments.
That's correct.
But you have not approved one for the twenty-four units.
That's correct.
Okay. Is that what your question, you asked?
Yeah, that's, that was my question. Do you have one? And if there's not one in place, then I guess, why are we moving forward at this point?
We'll be filling less than we originally proposed.
Well, that still doesn't mean it's been done, though, and it's still not a part of it.
But we'd be finalizing it at the final plat stage. So, we have done a preliminary study with a larger development area, and it was, it was looked at by your city engineer, which he was okay with. Now, we had to finalize that at this, at the stage that we moved forward past the final plat.
Well, I, I, go ahead.
Other questions? Comments?
I don't, I don't know that I'm very comfortable with, with that.
Can, can Mike?
Can we ask Mike?
Yeah.
In your consideration, Mike, should this be tabled until this is redone?
If that's the desire of the council, I think that that would be appropriate. I would like to have our engineer look at that.
I would like to propose this be tabled until that can be looked at. Amending the motion.
If I may, we'd like a vote. I believe we have a right to a vote.
Okay, have a seat. Let me conduct my meeting, sir. If you have a comment that you would like to make in a minute?
I believe a motion to table is not debatable. Isn't that true? So, if you make a motion to table and you have a second, then the council can vote on it.
But then we can have more discussion.
No. It's not debatable. There's no discussion on a motion to table.
Okay, so who made a motion to table?
Richard.
Who seconded it?
I'll second it.
Okay. And then now we have to vote?
Yes, sir.
Call the roll. Now, wait a minute. So, a yes vote is to table it, and a no vote is not to table it?
Correct.
Okay. And then we can't have any discussion over this? Okay. Call the roll.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
No.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarran?
Yes.
Smysterla?
Yes.
This item will appear at your next meeting automatically because it's tabled.
Okay. All right, can we, I guess I'm not clear, so it's been tabled for who to do what?
For them to submit, the statement was that it was not ready for the council's consideration because the preliminary no-rise study for the plat that is being submitted, the study has not been submitted yet to our city engineer.
Okay, so-
Meantime, I would expect the applicant to submit a no-rise study consistent with the preliminary plat that's being proposed for our engineer's consideration.
Okay, thank you. Are you all clear on that? Okay, thank you, sir. Next item is item number five, and that's consider approving an agreement between the city of Yukon and the Federal Emergency Management Agency, I'm sorry, regarding the Federal Emergency Management Agency Inaugurated Public Alert and Warning System Program Management Office for the use of Interpolable System and IPAS Open Platform for Emergency Network as recommended by the Information Technology Director. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smaestra?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
The next item is six, and that's consider approving Amendment Number One to the city of Yukon Year 14 Community Development Block Grant, Small City Set Aside Roadway Sanitary Sewer and Roadway Repair Project, as reflected as built qualities for the project and a reduction of cost of $11,872.95, as recommended by the city engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Smaestra?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Next item is seven, and that's consider accepting the 2014 Community Development Block Grant in the amount of $64,567, which was used to replace the sanitary sewer and roadway on Cedar Avenue between 19th and 11th Street, is completed, placing the maintenance bond into effect, and confirm authorization of the final payment of the contractor as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smaestra?
Yes.
I've asked that item eight be pulled, and we'll let, so that will appear on the next agenda, is that right?
Right. Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there's some questions from a council member on this, and they request that the court clerk be present to answer some questions in regard to the technology fee that's being proposed. She is not present this evening, but we will have her here at the next meeting. So if you would, we'll just pull this item, and we'll address it at the next meeting.
So that's eight and 8A?
Yes, yes, sir. Eight, say, eight and 8A both. Yes, sir.
Number nine is new business. Any new business this evening, sir?
No this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Council discussion. Mr. McCarron?
Well, I enjoyed the fact that we had some open discussion on the Pets and People, things that have been going on in our town, and I believe it's, it's time that we certainly have that opportunity to look at where we're going as a community and the way in which we handle animals. And so it's, I think, a good thing that those discussions have been opened again. I want to thank Lynn Alexander for coming this evening and bringing some information to us. You know, a lot of people just, you know, don't care enough to even show up. Congratulations to Kenley and the Chamber of Commerce. I'm looking forward to another, another good year. And with that, I yield back, Mayor.
Councilman Russell?
I would just like to thank everybody for showing up and voicing their opinion tonight. That's it for me today.
Councilwoman Smaestra?
Also, I'd like to thank everyone who came and expressed their opinions, and that's what we're here for, to do that, and we thank you very much.
Councilwoman Yanda?
Well, I just want to thank Kenley for being here, and we appreciate, and you, and all the hard work you did at the Chamber of Commerce and the relationship that the city has with the chamber. And then I also want to thank everyone from Pets and People for being here, for making improvements, for working toward a resolve to the current situation. Thank you.
Oh, I do have one little short thing. I'd also like to say thanks to David Goodwin, he was on the agenda tonight for us to put on the Spanish Cove, and it's nice to have, you know, him step forward and join the board and become a part of their community and their world. And my congratulations go out to David as well. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Sure. I'd like to say thanks to John for bringing some kolaches this evening and give us a little sample of better things to come and a lot more of them. Thank you very much, and I liked your shirt. Did you? Now, it looks good. Now, I can't take credit for any of that. And then also for Pets and People, I'm glad that there is a discussion that's going back and forth, and I think it's a good discussion, and there are other people that are concerned, I think, that we're dealing with and addressing an issue that needs to be resolved. I think there's a need that they fulfill here in the community, and I think that that matter sounds like will be ultimately resolved in our study session. So it looked like probably at least a six-month process, if maybe a little bit longer. But we are working diligently to address that issue along with other issues that we're working with, for instance, the audit. I'm looking forward, Mr. Crosby, as Ms. Yanda and all the other council members, to seeing the audit, being able to provide the information, and I look forward to having that special meeting and presenting that information. And I'd like to end on a positive note. I did receive many compliments and thank yous for the Route 66, the party rocking the route. That was a great job, well-done by staff and the different volunteers and the many different people that contributed and sponsored that program. It was really a neat, a neat scene. I'd like to see, and I mean, I won't take credit for it, but many people said, hey, well, this should be an annual event. I don't know whether it should be or not. I think that it was really neat. I think it would get bigger, shutting down the highway and putting the lights over the top. It really, it made for some neat pictures on Facebook. So every once in a while, I look at Facebook. Anyway, so with nothing, no other business before the council, then we stand adjourned.